Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole of the Tacoma School Board, Thursday, February 6th, 2020. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on with the agenda this evening, we're joined by one of our student representatives. Jasmine, would you like to take a minute to, you have no microphone. We'll make one available. Welcome. We're happy to have you here. Would you take a minute to let us know where you're from and a little bit about your background?
Yeah, sure. My name's Jasmine Pearson. I'm a junior at SAMH and I'm an alternate student school board rep and I'm just very happy to be here.
Good to have you.
Good to have you here. So tonight, as a committee of the whole, we're coming back to talk about our health and safety of students and staff, policy and strategy. Over the course of the last several weeks and months, we've taken this broad topic and really winnowed it down to be focused on mental health. And at the last study session, we had a comprehensive presentation on what we're doing in the district and what we're doing around suicide prevention and And you'll see in the presentation that there's some archived information. For purposes of tonight, it really is just conversation around what do we want to do next. So it'll be mostly us talking with one another with the superintendent and the deputy superintendent available if we have any specific questions. I thought I'd just walk us through the presentation and then open it up for conversation. So what is mental health? As a refresher, that's the definition that we pulled from And the next slide, what is at stake particularly around suicide? And really for our consideration this evening, what can we do next, looking at it through the lens of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative and broken into the categories of policymakers, us specifically working with our partners and internal. And then the next slide, for our consideration, what we can do next for the Tacoma Whole Educator, again, us as policymakers working with partners and internal to our organization. So we had the comprehensive presentation and questions and then we went away. Does anybody have any thoughts that they'd like to come back to to start the conversation this evening about the presentation that we received or anything else on mental health? I will give an update on the 1/10th of 1% with Pierce County. So I committed at that board meeting to send out the draft letter. We finalized the letter. I sent it to every board president of a Pierce County public school. We've received, I think that was 14 schools. We have seven or eight back signed. Also have received correspondence back from school districts that have a need and appreciate Tacoma spearheading the letter, but were in a position at this time where they couldn't support a sales tax. So the thought is revising the letter and sending it back out that doesn't specify the funding source, but indicates to the county council the collective need around mental health resources for students in Pierce County. And then as they get into the, at the county council level, well, two things. We know there was just an op-ed in the TNT that outlined what they referred to as Mental Health Tax 2.0. And the county council does plan to take up this issue in committee next week. So our timing in partnership with our colleagues seems to be pretty good, but the county council hasn't indicated yet what specific steps they would want to take. It may include the 1/10th of 1%. We may not want to limit ourselves to only asking for a 1/10th of 1% if there might be some other resources that could be made available. Thoughts? Vice President Cobb?
The opposition to being clear about the funding source, I guess my thought about it is that that is an existing mechanism or existing lever that could be pulled that specifically already outlined for mental health support. So the, I think the proposal is about pulling the existing lever. Without being specific about that, I just feel like it's not really advocating for anything that we haven't already advocated for. I understand the opposition and where it comes from, but from where we started, I thought that really the push was about pulling that existing lever rather than just general support for general push towards prioritizing additional funding for this effort or towards this end. So I just don't know where, how I feel about backing away from being specific about this ask, but others might feel differently.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Director Leon?
I think the idea of backing away might allow for conversation with constituents of some of our neighboring districts and some of those board members to have conversations with us and their constituents and others at county council level and their city council levels of respective cities. But maybe after that discussion, then there could be some discussion about financial, where the funding would actually come from.
Okay. Director Keating?
And I would echo what Director Cobb, Director Leon said. And I also feel like there may be with the districts who might not have the community support in terms of increasing taxes, which I understand is a burden on the community. I wonder what data would be helpful that could be included in the presentation, you know, pulling from the Pierce County Health Department, pulling from our hospitals and what is, what is the actual impact? And I know that we heard when Director Hines and I were in DC that for Washington State, there are two students a week that are lost to suicide in our state. So we, I mean, it's, it's known that this is a significant issue and it has to be done, I believe collaboratively. So I guess my wonder is how can we present the information and data that would give maybe the other boards the information they need to feel more supportive and saying, and being able to take a position like this is an actual need within our community and this is a lever and also exploring, are there additional sources?
Thank you. Director Baumbruh?
I agree totally with this avenue.
Okay. Vice President Cobb?
I appreciate the comments about not being specific, opening the door for opportunities for conversation. I do appreciate that. But I think then where I land a little bit and wondering about is, I don't even, I actually don't know the anticipated revenue that would come from 1/10th of 1%, like how much that is. And I don't expect that 100% of that would be allocated towards support for youth. So maybe then it does make me think though, what is the ask, like in terms of level of resource that we'd want to see and be happy with, what would emerge out of those conversations about possible infusions of, or reallocation of support? Like what, where would we be happy if we saw, how much, what's the scale of the infusion of support that we'd be happy with?
Yeah. And I don't know that that's been quantified. The, as a reminder, the, the origin was the Pierce County wide meeting that was held between, in early December, between all Pierce County school districts, school boards, superintendents and Pierce County state legislators. And it was suggested to us at the meeting to the collective Pierce County school districts that we urge the county council to consider a 1/10th, a 1% mental health tax. But I don't think that the financial, on the, on the finance side, I don't think that that analysis has yet been conducted. And I don't know that we've put a cost on the need. So there still is, to your point, Vice President Cobb, some work that's going to need to be done collectively to make that determination. And we also understand that the 1/10th of 1% from the county would be part of the solution, but not the entire solution. And I think that was the idea of being able to go back to the state and say, we acted upon your suggestion. And I think, Vice President Cobb, if we have those numbers, those in the aggregate that you're talking about, that'll help us quantify what the 1/10th, what is the cost of the overall need and how much would the 1/10th of 1% potentially cover that? And what's the delta that would need to come from additional local, state or federal funding? So I think you're, I think those are, we'll have to figure out how we perhaps through the school board presidents to aggregate that information. And I know we did get feedback from legislators the night of that meeting that they needed some more specific numbers in order to consider the requests that we had made. Director Keating?
Do we, do you know if all school districts within Pierce County do a healthy youth survey in the same way? And I, and if so, I see Dr. Garcia nodding yes. If so, I wonder if that would, if, if we maybe in the ask, ask the boards, these additional, these other boards within the county to take a look at that and what is, what is their data within their own district? And then have them maybe do some footwear before we, you know, like make a definitive, you know, position, take a definitive position on, you know, it needs to be this tax or whatever. I think like also maybe helping guide the conversation to have people reflect on what's, what's the need within their own district and what is that data? And then collectively pooling that information throughout all districts in Pierce County. I wonder how much, if that would paint a more clear picture of the actual need.
And Superintendent Santorno, Charlie Brown, who's our government affairs person that night at the meeting, committed to Senator Darnell that he could help gather some of that more specific information. So perhaps we could engage Charlie and his team to help us put that together. Director Leon?
So there, that data is being gathered by the other school districts. Sometimes they're not participating at the same rate that the return rate on the surveys is not as good as maybe ours. I don't know which ones are better or worse, but I think we're better on the return rate. So that is also publicly, the county data is available, but each district has access to their own district data. Because if you separate it out, people are concerned that you could identify, potentially identify individual youth that have answered a question a certain way because their N number is so small that you could figure out where they came from and what school. But all that being said, I still know, because I've talked to not all school board members, but other leaders throughout, not just our county, but others, that people don't understand and realize how prevalent the suicidal ideation and depression rates are in high school, that they're as high as they are, leading to the suicide actual completion rate, which is obviously the worst extreme. And then we've talked before about the middle ground of suffering where there's bullying and abuse and drug abuse and domestic violence that is due to a part of the depression and anxiety.
Thank you.
I just have something to add. Director Leon, you had said you specified high school and suicidality. And I would say that actually the, the low end of the age is actually elementary school. It's 10, right? Nine and 10 year olds. So we're talking about fourth graders. And you know, our, our family actually have, has experience with this. And so I think that it's also important to, because I know that often things can be talked about in with older students and not connected back to, that it actually starts often much younger. And I feel like that's an important piece to keep in mind and be discussing, discussing as well.
And I agree with you. We don't have all, we don't have as many data collection methods for the healthy youth survey. Under eighth grade, is that eighth grade where we start? I don't think it's sixth. So, but you're absolutely correct. It starts much earlier.
And I was just going to add that when we were in DC, we learned from a colleague in Yakima that they had just had an eight-year-old commit suicide. And a year ago, when I was at the Federal Relations Network conference, as we were walking into a ninth congressional district meeting, a colleague from Isicua got notification that a first grader had committed suicide, which I can't even get my head wrapped around that. So yeah, definitely looking for data to make certain that we're not restricted by the formal data that we, that we figure out ways to assess how all of the kids are doing, I think is very important. Superintendent, coming back to using Charlie Brown, perhaps Charlie could reach out to the members, Senator Darnell or members of the Pierce County legislators to determine what sort of data would be helpful? And also if the county is getting ready to take this under consideration next week, to reach out to the county council to determine what sort of information from school districts would be helpful, because I imagine it's going to be much broader. Our, our narrow worldview of school districts, I think when they take it under consideration, they'll be looking at the whole community. So what would be helpful to them for, from a school district perspective? Dr. Garcia?
I just wanted to say, I don't want to belabor the discussion around the 1/10th of 1%. I think there is a lot of conversation to be had. But I do think it's important that this is a lever that's already been identified for this purpose. And it doesn't have to be always additive. I know that this is like politically infeasible, but could be a 1/10th of 1% reduction in the, in the city sales tax and offset by one, the one, leveraging the 1/10th of 1% that is available over here. So I do think that it's more important to continue conversation and like shared learning among the policymakers in our area about this topic. But I also think that the fact that it's a designated option for this is an important thing to not lose sight of in the conversations as they move forward.
Dr. Garcia?
Just in context to the recommendations, the school boards came together in December and said that this was an area of interest to continue to explore. I don't know if the school boards as Pierce County have had an opportunity to really solidify even how that support would be impacted to school-aged children. And so what I think we're hearing from our colleagues is a little bit of hesitation about taxes or this, but it may be another action step is for you to host a school board symposium. And just where your school boarders, folks can come together and give a more of a philosophy towards, are we asking that money to come to us and for what purposes? Because I think there's value in continuing the conversation and showing unity at the county level. But I think there's also a need for school boards in Pierce County to identify, is that money coming for school-aged children for mental health? And are we unified towards that? Or is that money coming into schools and that's the expectation? Maybe the, the action step in, in parallel to the letter of unity.
Director Leon?
Yeah, I think we, we do need to have a concrete idea or plan set forward for other board members and voters, not to say, oh, you know, generally speaking, we do something good with this, but a set plan. So are we going to, you know, expand our partnerships with comprehensive mental health, for instance, at these schools with these numbers of counselors because we think it can have a certain impact? Will we expand our, you know, relationship with Franciscan or community healthcare to open more school-based health centers at, at certain high schools, strategic high schools throughout the city, which will also deliver mental health with physical health? Would we use some of that to explore or help us with, you know, whatever it costs for delayed school start time in high school to help with some of those mental health pieces? So concrete ideas that, you know, policymakers and constituents and voters could get behind or not behind.
I think also from a Tacoma perspective, I don't know how much of the 1/10th of 1% county sales tax we would receive. My guess is that it would not be as significant as other school districts in the county. And the, you know, it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg. I know that, I think the county council has expressed an interest in having the conversation. That's where they're going to take it up at committee. So I want to be careful that we, I do take Dr. Garcia's suggestion of a symposium or some sort of a follow-on meeting may be helpful. But I also think that the county council may want to have a study session where school boards are able to come in and speak and provide their perspective, that that might be a more efficient way because there's more predictability and those school districts that want to come and participate know when the, that particular council committee would meet. So what do we think in terms of, we have a letter that's out there. It's specific to the 1/10th of 1%. We can communicate that to interested members of the county council and take guidance. We have the opportunity to revise the letter to just draw attention to the issue, to begin the process that may lead us to the 1/10th of 1%. Should we have Charlie Brown reach out to the legislature and the council to get their input on next steps? Director Baumbruh?
Yeah, I was just about to suggest that maybe we, we actually ask Charlie Brown and his team to sort of do that conversation, like what would be most helpful? I think in some cases, asking for the 1/10th of 1% like Director Cobb has suggested is, is the lever we want them to pull. So, you know, to drop it altogether may not be entirely beneficial because it takes the pressure off. But we also could say that it's in combination with the data that we'd be collecting because they're not going to make the decision, you know, in the next couple, couple of weeks, a month. So it gives us time to say, still say we think the 1/10th of 1%, but say along with other options because there, it's not going to cover it all. So, and then we could have, we could get the data from the hospital, get the data from the other school districts and talk with Senator Darnell about what would be helpful to her, which might be very different than what would be helpful to the county council. So I think we have to do a little bit of, of deep dive into what each group needs. And then maybe we, do we have a Pierce County school board group, like a subgroup of WASDA or for the just Pierce County?
We have a superintendent's group.
And we have our regional meetings.
But, but I, maybe we should start with the superintendent's group in Pierce County and ask, you know, ask them to do, you know, this hard, the digging of, figure out what the uniform data that we can gather that, that Charlie Brown and his team could tell us, this is what Senator Darnell wants, this is what the county council wants. And if the superintendent's group could start collecting that, that, what it is, what is it that we have that is uniform across in terms of data? And then link it with what we've, we know between the hospitals, that information about those kids. And then, you know, I think my fear, and I think this is what I'd mentioned a few times ago when we first talked about the 1/10th of 1%, is, you know, I think it's problematic not to tell them that we want to be part of the solution. Not to just say pass 1/10th of 1%. We, it could be, none of it could go to children. So I think there has to be some guidance along the way to say, we need to start early, both with prevention and with helping families holistically on mental health. Because it's oftentimes, it could be the parents that are having the mental health issue, but the kids are having the resulting behavior. So, you know, I think in lots of ways, we, we need to do this collectively. So maybe we start with the superintendent's group and then you guys can help take, us take it then up to the boards.
So I can put it on the, you know, I can ask to put it on the agenda. And then, again, it means that the group of them have to depend, have to say that it's something they want to look at right now.
Right, right.
And would they need direction from their board? Or is that something they could undertake on their own?
That's a good question. I would say mostly they can take it up, you know, on their, on their own. Yeah, I think so.
Dr. Garcia?
What's the action? So right now you have a recommendation of a letter that's the boards, right? The board presidents. So the superintendents can definitely take up action. So what is that investigate, coming together to say, these are the kinds of recommendation for youth that we're looking for and advocating for?
Vice President Cobb?
I feel like at this stage, given the, I feel like what we're asking for, and I might be wrong, especially with the removal of the specifics around 1/10th of 1%, is for them to prioritize working with us to identify solutions. I mean, and, and a way to, solutions and a way to fund or to, I don't know, the solutions like, it sounds like the funding source, but it also sounds like the strategy. So working with us to identify a path forward to something X, Y, and Z. But it's more about, like you said, the partnership around this, really honing in on what's the data that we need, how do we scope the problem? And then what's the right way to resource the strategy? Might be the tax, it might be reallocation of existing funds, but we're asking them to raise this up as a priority.
Superintendent Santorno?
It's part of that ask about, is this a priority of yours? Do you want to pursue it with us? Do you want to, you know, we, we know we all have the same data. You heard at the legislative meeting that it was an issue for, you know, every district wasn't there, but there were quite a few that were saying, yeah, this is an issue. So, you know, then, you know, I bring it up on the agenda and talk about, you know, where is this in your district? And, you know, what are some things that you're doing as a district? And would you be willing to go to this next step?
And perhaps Charlie reaching out first will help to shape what the questions are that you would have of your colleagues. Because if we can get more information, we don't know what the county council is thinking about right now. And to get from them what would be helpful from the school district, rather than having a crystal ball.
Yeah.
Yeah. That may be a more efficient way. So my, Director Baumbruh?
Yeah. I, I think, I think that's exactly right. I think we need to do things simultaneously or, because I, I don't know what the timeline is on the 1/10th of 1% conversation at the council. We don't want to miss an opportunity to help bolster that conversation. I think the letter started, you know, it happened to, to start a conversation that maybe they didn't know the enthusiasm for this potential thing. So I think there's some strategic conversation that needs to happen to help, you know, we don't want to drop the 1/10th of 1%, I don't think. But we have to just say that's not, that's certainly the only answer. So as Director Cobb was saying, I think they have to commit to mental health. I don't think they can quite yet commit to necessarily the funding stream, but as soon as they get bought into the issues that they want to address and maybe some of the strategies, it'll be obvious that there's a need of what gets, needs to get funded and how much. And that's when maybe they look at, at the venue. Because sometimes the venue, what needs to be funded is so expensive, they don't, they have to go with something like a 1/10th of 1%. Because nothing else would give them that kind of resource. So I think both is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Director Keating?
It's also my understanding or my recollection that for WASDA, that mental health, this is an identified priority. So for like how you address that identified priority, I think is what I feel like is our conversation. And then getting collaborative support and buy-in is part of like telling that story of how do we, how do we help the other board to understand that this is, you know, this is, this is a, already an identified need. And so we are exploring, how do we, how do we find that best solution? And maybe those of you that are, have, and, and correct me if I'm, I'm not right on the WASDA identified need, but I feel like that has been a conversation that I've been a part of and hearing. And so, and I don't feel like this is, it is clearly an essential need in our community. It's how do we get there? That I feel like is, we can't make that decision on our own and it has to be done in a level of collaboration, particularly since Pierce County is so diverse and so vast. And I, I do agree with Director Baumbruh where I feel like we have to make, we, we have to connect these dots and, and also maybe even try to identify, is there a timeline?
All right. Thank you. Perhaps Charlie could reach out to the chair of the council's Human Services Committee. I believe that would be the committee of jurisdiction to take this issue up, to provide us with that clarification on what they're thinking and how we could be helpful with our...
What committee?
The, the Human Services, Pierce County Council Human Services Committee. And we definitely, you know, I think we're on to an opportunity for broader engagement with our colleagues countywide. WASDA sometimes brings us together, but the way it's not... I think that there's an opportunity for us also, in addition to, to the, what WASDA provides, to be on a, on a board-to-board, a better board-to-board community. to be on a, on a board-to-board, a better board-to-board communication. And I think this presents itself, I think there's, I can imagine, a whole host of issues that we may want to engage those board members in. So perhaps the other action item, and Dr. Garcia, I think this blends with your idea of a symposium, maybe we just try to schedule more regular meetings. Because that was super productive that night to have everybody in the room talking about some specific issues. If we could set that up and the meeting could travel throughout the county, school districts could host it, but we would know that we would have, if it's monthly or bi-monthly, whatever the rhythm is, we would know that we would have that dedicated time with Pierce County School District colleagues to sit down and talk through issues.
Yeah, I like that.
With the, back to thinking about what we can do around whole child. Superintendent, have you identified any policy gaps around mental health? And then I'll ask my colleagues if, if anyone has identified policy opportunities around mental health. So is there, from your perspective, is there a policy that we don't have that we need or an existing policy that needs to be amended?
I haven't looked at it at all, so.
Okay.
I have, I haven't looked at policy gaps.
Okay. Vice President Cobb?
I think the step, the potential step that I'm most excited about on the way to the, identifying the policy gaps is the conducting the student listening sessions. I feel like we spend a lot of time talking about possibilities and potential, but I really still want to get some more input from students who are experiencing day-to-day lives in our schools and interacting with the current context of the world. So just in thinking about the gaps, I still really want to hear from them first.
And it is February. Do we have, Superintendent, we had talked about, we'd asked you to put together some parameters so that we could ensure continuity when we go out for discussion. Is that... Dr. Garcia?
So, we've, we've put recommendations from you and then we're waiting for you to tell us if these are the right places. So we have some tentative frameworks for student listening sessions, but it was one of the specific recommendations. So after, if there's a, if there's enough there, there, because the conversation's filtered down into suicide and then what would be the questions? And do you want them now still in regards to suicide prevention? Or is it broader back to the mental health? But getting you in front of students is, is, there's a framework, six to small groups. We have some questions that we could frame out for you. Once again, we wanted to wait for you to say, is this the right recommendations to your conversation?
Director Baumbruh?
So I want to, you know, take us back to the committee of the whole that we had on December 5th, which was the one where we all brought, you guys gave us the framework and we were going to prioritize. And then we kind of had that long and I think fairly productive conversation about how the buckets would look. And I think, it's kind of my opinion, I think, that if we're going to take the process to go out and talk with students, we probably could, should maximize our use of their time by not, you know, just doing it one subject at a time, because then we'd have to go out multiple times, which, I mean, we will, but I'm just thinking, if we're going to talk about mental health, it would be great if we had different buckets and maybe they would want to talk about a specific bucket, such as bullying, you know, we had three or four things under the, everybody had two or three or four things that we came up with that were consistent, I think, sorry. We, thank you. We had bullying, we had, you know, the mental health, that, you know, suicide prevention, we had, and then we had student physical health, which wasn't mental health, but it was the physical health. And so if we took a couple of those topics and if we had student groups that wanted to talk about one versus the other, like bullying versus suicide prevention, which actually they're linked, as we know, but if we had multiple school, if we had two school board members, they could divide into different groups or, I mean, I'm not sure how we do it, but I'm just thinking that we have these buckets, we came up with these kind of ideas. So now it's just operationalizing how we get the input from the students. Is that what, is that right? Are we trying to still find what are the topics? That's my question. I'm trying to figure out if December 5th, we actually did that or if now we're, I just want to know where we are on the process.
Yeah, I think we identified the topics at December 5th. I hear the question before us now is, are those the topics that we're interested in pursuing?
Okay, so.
And I shared Vice President Cobb's sense of urgency, so I would encourage us, if we could make some decisions tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
Time is of the essence. Is those categories that were the buckets from December 5th?
Mm-hmm.
Sir, head nods for... Vice President Cobb?
I think that, I don't know how much time we're going to have with students, I don't know how deep they're going to want to go on a particular topic that just comes up because one student offers it.
Yeah.
I feel like we know generally the, the topic that we're trying to get a sense on and get a pulse, like a read on from students. And I feel like we could sit up here and like go into the weeds and come back up and go all around, like trying to get to the specifics of what the protocol looks like. But I do trust that we've had enough conversations, staff has heard enough from us about priorities. And if we say clearly, like, we want to execute on this as a next step, that, giving them that clarity would allow for them to put something together that would work in the timeframe that we would have and work, given the process and structure.
And so, mental health is a, is the topic for you? I mean, what, that's what I'm asking is, because we had a variety of different priorities. Some of them were mental health and some of them were physical health.
I actually think that going back to the broader bucket of student health and safety, but within that, we've had a lot of conversation about...
And see where they take it.
Yeah, and I think there's some pretty clear themes hopefully will emerge within the topic of mental health and suicide prevention and bullying and all these things. And that will be confirming or illuminating for us to see the check on our perceptions versus their reality, so.
And I believe we'd also talked about trying to schedule it during the day while students are already on campus and giving them an opportunity to come into the auditorium, like a large venue.
For to eat with, eat with us.
Right, for sixty minutes, ninety minutes.
Whatever it looks like.
Right. And then, so I think we have consensus on the topic and, and the venue. Director Keating?
I would just add to what Director Cobb was saying. I'm in conversation with students frequently around relationships and around safety and inclusion and I, from my experience, they know at a very young age that if you ask them, if you ask students about like this broader topic, they're going to bring up things that we've not thought about. They're going to bring up barriers and things that, and systems that we, we wouldn't even have identified. So I think that having, like, taking that bigger scope back, I think would help not, it would potentially not limit the conversation. And also, I would be curious, and because I wasn't at the December 5th meeting, I would be, I would be, I would hope that we wouldn't just be talking to high school students. I would hope that we would be talking to a range of students, developmentally appropriate, of course, but to hear, like, what is this experience like for you? What, what would help you? What would support you? What would be different? What would you change? But like, those are the, and that would be something that I would be very curious in just listening to student response.
So we have ten high schools?
We have five.
Soto, Sammy, five comprehensive, Soto, Sammy, Willie Stewart Academy, Oakland.
Oh, ten with that one, yeah, ten.
And do we do anything? IDEA, do we not have ten?
We have ten.
The original premise was to focus in on health and safety of students and staff and to hear from the student voice. Six to ten students brought together for a conversation where you could hear from them, what's their experience around their health, physical and mental health, safety without a big broad. You recognize that there would be some variance to that, right, in that message based on their experiences in there. So facilitating that, but it's ten conversations, so if you want to add additional groups, it's not really likely that we would necessarily transport kids unless you want or have a larger group than six to ten. If you went into middle schools, you're adding ten more sites, twenty different small group in there. So we would be happy to facilitate that for you and get you there and we can build you a rotation and then you can let us know if you're able to participate or not.
And we're saying divide and conquer, so that's four, potentially middle and high school, it's four conversations each, not, no.
Right.
Yeah, one of us at each.
Yeah.
Yes.
To listen, right?
To listen, with, and we had talked about then, but with the report back. So trying to ensure consistent note-taking, so we had asked for support, staff support, taking notes so that it gets reported back, that there's continuity in the way that it gets reported back. And then individual board members that attended the listening session could read from the notes and share with one another. I don't remember six to ten. I thought we had talked about having, that we didn't limit it, that students that wanted to come and participate would be given an opportunity to come and participate.
There was a fluid discussion.
All right, what are your thoughts on...
I'm...
Vice President Cobb?
Sorry, I'm more inclined to have the, I don't want there to be an over-curated group of kids. I mean, I trust building teams to like make the opportunity available, hopefully, and to see, I, I do think that there, if we want to have a good discussion, there has to be some limit put on the number of students. So the six to ten for a focus group conversation actually sounds right to me. Maybe there's a bigger survey-type opportunity as a follow-up to probe on some themes that come out of these conversations, that's a more school-wide opportunity. But I do think in order to have like a good conversation, the group can't be too large. But I don't know what that means in terms of how folks will get identified, students will get identified to participate, but...
Yeah, and that's the concern that I have, is if, if it's six to ten kids, I see our student representative nodding. Jasmine, do you have any thoughts on how we might, if we were going to come into Sammy, should it be six to ten Sammy students or should it be open to however many want to participate or twenty, limited to twenty? What do you think?
Um, my only worry about limiting or just even having small groups is having a, like a diverse group of students because a lot of times, the people who volunteer for this like sort of thing are similar in a sense. I know that I typically volunteer to do a lot of things around my school, but I'm also like just very active in my school community and I have a very similar experience to others who are active in my school community. But if you want to try and reach out to those who hate or tolerate school, it's going to be a lot harder to get them to come to these, but you also need to have a wide range of students there.
So I think that kind of, that kind of means, I mean, to me, that's a signal, I totally agree with you, but it, what it also means is that, that we need teachers to recruit students, you know, to talk about students that have articulated that they have a different voice, you know, to get them there. Because I think if you leave it up to volunteers, you're still, you're not going to get a group of students. You'll get the, the active, you know, kids that want to come. So it seems to me that, number one, we have to involve the schools and they, they know how they're organized, they know what they do. I think we need to talk to principals and counselors about, hey, what's the best way? This is what we want our outcome to be, this is how we want this to work. Give us some advice about how to do the next steps and, you know, know. And, you know, you don't want to have a group of twenty kids and then have the same ones talking the whole time or have them feel intimidated because they don't want to talk about their experience in front of all these other students that, you know, have, are more successful. They want to be able to tell the real story and be comfortable with it. But I think the best people who can tell us what that looks like is to actually talk to the schools.
And you could invite students when those relationships with counselors and...
Yeah, I was just going to say.
You, you, if we leave it open to everyone as they select, you could potentially have twelve hundred kids say, I would like to come. And so allow us a little bit of functionality to create an environment for you. And if you don't feel like that's, after that experience where you feel like, I'd like to hear from more, you're welcome to go visit more. And we can bring in a different group of kids.
I think I would like to hear from more than ten, less than twelve hundred, so that we truly ensure that it's representative.
More than one group. So maybe what you're talking about is a forty-five minute group, a forty-five minute group, a ninety-minute session, two different groups of forty-five minutes, so that you do expand, but it's not that you have so many that kids won't talk.
And ten kids at each school is a hundred students that we're hearing from and opportunity to hear themes across, so, I don't know.
I continue to be concerned if we narrow the number of students, how truly representative it would be. So, and I don't know what the magic number is. And I also want to make certain that we have a process in place where if you are introverted and it's intimidating to come, how do you get to express yourself? So is it, do we more broadly, do we collect comment cards that come with these ten to twenty students that can be representative people that have something they want answered, but they don't necessarily want to stand up in front of their peers in the school board and say it? Like, how do we capture those sorts of, without overcomplicating it?
And I think one of the mistakes we often make, and, you know, I defer to Lisa too, is that we ask students to give us feedback, we ask them to, and what we don't realize is that they have to have a relationship with someone before they're going to tell them the truth. And so, board members or superintendent, you know, in front of them is not going to get the truth because I don't have a relationship with you.
President Hines? Director Leo?
So I think, I'd like to probably trust your staff to, to give us an idea of what you think a representative group would be. I think it could be from ten to twenty. I think if you start going beyond that, then you get people that are scared to talk about sensitive topics. You, you know, at, at somewhere in that number, under, you know, under twenty, between ten and twenty. So whether they're identified by the counselors, by some teachers, as you know, we get some extroverts, we get some introverts, we get everybody from, you know, AP to all different types of classes to come give us feedback. But maybe the schools can identify them and we don't want just everybody who's in the honor society coming, right? So.
Director Baumbruh?
And my question, I was thinking the same thing as the superintendent, that I think the, the trust and the, the confidence level that whatever they're saying isn't going to be either misinterpreted or impact them in some negative way. And I don't know if that's a positive for having, asking the counselor, you know, a counselor from the school to sit, sit in or if maybe they'd be even more inhibited because, you know, they, they don't want the counselor to hear. I don't know what the answer to that is, but that would be a question. But I, what I want to make sure is that we're not, since it's one of us with a group of students, if, if, and we're talking about a very emotional subject, a very difficult subject, and it may very well get intense for one or more kids that are sharing. And just, we, we should know what the protocol is or how we can make sure that all the children, that young children are supported in what they say, but also that there, if there are repercussions or that, we're not the only ones who are hearing this, that somebody else can help them when we leave. I just want to make sure that we think that through too. Because we don't want to set up a situation where people have been honest and something erupts in a, in a, in a healthy way, you know, maybe gets very emotional. But we want to make sure we're clear about what, how to handle that, if we haven't had experience doing that in the past.
Director Keating?
Um, I, what I would be curious about is maybe in talking with the buildings and staff, maybe having the counselors be the ones to be the facilitators because they have the relationship, first of all. And depending on the level, there could be ground rules, community agreements, which are essential if you're going to have a safe, inclusive conversation, is setting those community, community agreements to say, this is how we're going to operate this conversation. And, and so, and I think like, in any time that you do any kind of complicated or uncomfortable conversation, it's always important to lay those foundations and our counselors are exceptionally skilled at that. So I feel like maybe, like, again, asking the professionals, what would be the best way? And I fully trust them in being able to advise us. And, and I kind of feel like we're overthinking this and we're problem-solving things that may not really be a problem because, and Jasmine, since you are the representative here, or Jasmine, pardon me, I think that what I, in my experience, youth are much more open than we think if we give them the opportunity, because we often never ask their opinion. And we, we rarely ask them to help be part of the solution. So generally, they're pretty open. Maybe they won't share really intimate details and that's not probably the best safe environment for that. But in terms of just having a community conversation about, here are some of the stresses we have, here's the impacts of that, here are the things I'm dealing with in school, outside of school, here are the, you know, and in the intersections of my own identity and my own dynamic as a... own dynamic as a person in this world, they're going to generally open up, and, and, and since I called on you, I, I will stop talking. But if you have something to add in terms of what you're hearing around my comment of, are we making this more complicated than it really needs to be?
Josh?
She needs the mic.
Most of the time, teachers, at least in my experience, always say that they're available to talk to, but they just preface it with, I'm a mandatory reporter, and I'm always going to tell you that, if you say something that I need to report, I will let you know, so that you don't feel any trust is broken. So I think just sticking with ground rules like that would be really important. But other than that, most students talk about this with each other, and it's frustrating when things that affect us aren't always brought to us to help problem-solve. So I think that it's important to just talk to students, and I think they will talk to you.
Thank you.
Vice President Cobb?
This just makes me laugh, like the comment, we're making this too complicated. Four of us go home to teenagers. Some of us more than one teenager.
So next steps, do we, are, I, have we been clear, Superintendent?
Yeah.
And if so, can you explain it to me? Because I feel.
Clear as mine. If you let me start with talking this, talking to counselors and talking to schools about what their next steps are, I mean, you know, what, what we're trying, what our outcome is, what our outcomes are, and I'm, I'm thinking the outcomes are, we want to hear unfiltered comments from students about what's interfering with their ability to function well and have good mental health, and, you know, and if we start with that premise, and then we go to the people at the school and ask them, then, then we can do that. I think that, that's a clear enough next step.
Okay. I mean, I'm sitting here now, starting to wonder if we need to go. Like, I want to hear from students, but I also hear, like, I want to, is it more productive to have counselors and teachers engage students and collect their thoughts and share that to us?
Oh, I'm saying, I'm sorry, I said.
Right?
Do you need to even be there? Yeah, I get that.
Like, I don't want to complicate things, by now we're here, and they're like, oh, we got to be profound. I just want to know what's on students' minds and how we can help.
Let's, let us have a crack at it, let us schedule, listen, put out a doodle poll of when you guys can go, let's set a goal for ourselves, it's, it's already mid-February. Getting to 20 sites will probably take you realistically a month, and let's agree that we can, the goal is, is to go hear from students, from Jasmine. It'll be a fluid conversation, and let's not set it up as a testimony environment. And so if you're, if that's enough guidance for now, we feel like we can create something, and we'll only get better at hearing from students at that point, is that fair?
Yes.
Absolutely. I think, I think the board is looking for direct input and feedback from students, and however that can best be achieved, I think is, certainly for me, that's the outcome. I want to hear directly from students, and that can be literal, or it can be a collection of their thoughts that we get, like, I'm not, I guess, I, I just want to make it as easy as possible on the students to be candid in a trusted environment, and if they've built rapport with teachers and counselors, and they're going to confide in those teachers and counselors, and that can get relayed to us, I'm comfortable with that. If it's sitting at a school in a small group with students, I'm comfortable with that. But I don't, I don't want us to be the impediment that keeps people from candidly sharing what they're experiencing.
And can it be both? I mean, we may find that we get information the first way and the second way.
Yeah, sure.
Well, and there might be a variety in, in the way we actually get the groups together. So, you know, maybe there's a small group that says, yeah, I, I got some kids that would like to talk about it, but they're not going to want anybody else in the room, and others that say, yeah, sure, have them come.
Yeah, and that's, that, that's exactly, so I, I think we're all giving you the flexibility to collect candid input from students, and, and if indeed we are going to go out to 20 schools, are we committing to one another that's four schools midday in the next month? What do you think is the timeline?
And you might find some students that would prefer not having it in the middle of the day. I mean, I just think we need to be flexible about the time, because, you know, let's let them direct what the time looks like.
President Hines?
Director Keating?
So, this is, to all of us, if we're, I would highly encourage us to be present for these conversations, just like any time we have stories and experiences relayed, when you're hearing it firsthand, it has a much different impact than if you're hearing it second or third-hand, or in writing. And I think that in, in just being present, if we're clear with ourselves, like the five of us, that our intent is to go to listen, and listen, not to respond, right, to, to actually absorb what's being said, I think that there's a lot of value to having us as an elected body, taking our time to go out and actually listen to our students, because we say every student every day. How do we demonstrate, and how do we model that as a board? I think this could be a really great opportunity for us to stand before students and say, we're here to hear from you so that we can better enact, we can then be better policymakers. And I think that there, I would just really, I wouldn't want to see us steer away from not being present. I, I, I fully trust the counselors and staff to be able to say, oh yeah, this is how we're going to do it. And if we just show up and we're like, here we go, I, I really feel like it's going to be extremely valuable, and there is great potential in being present.
And I appreciate that, and I think, just to clarify, I was, I want to make certain that we don't have a chilling effect on the candor with which students express themselves, because the dynamic, when we go into buildings, the dynamic changes. And so I just want to make certain that we can keep it as authentic as possible, and that, that the superintendent understands that this is not about us, it's about them. And so if we can get the best, most direct information from students in whatever dynamic makes sense for them to most share. I would love to go and listen to students, but if we get feedback that says, oh my gosh, I got to go talk in front of the school board, no, thank you, or they're, they don't want me to be honest, so I'm going to, going to kind of smooth off the rough edges of what I might confide to a counselor or a teacher, so that, that's just where I was coming from. Vice President Cobb?
To that point, I, I think, I, I agree with both of you, actually, and I think even in the setup, the chilling effect might even be for the adults, not for the kids necessarily. I just, as an example, I remember going to, early in the, in the football season, a game at stadium, and I had a Starbucks cup in my hand, and the person was like, oh, I didn't realize it was you, and they're like, go ahead, because they told me to put my cup like they couldn't take it in at first. I was like, no, I'm not special, I'm going to finish my cup, and then I'll go down. So just like on the day, we're Scott, Andrea, Enrique, Elizabeth, and Lisa, like, just for everybody involved, like, we're not special. Just setting that tone for not just the students, but staff involved too, I think is important. Nobody's being evaluated on this day, no one's being judged, we're all just here to learn together.
All right, Superintendent, do you have enough to move forward?
I think so.
Okay, and what, what's, so we can calibrate expectations on the timeline, are you going to have, are you going to need our formal head nod?
We are going to put, Ms. Beatty is going to help us, and you're going to identify approximately four days when you're available, and for a conversation, and then we will plug you into schools during those four days.
Okay.
And we'll attempt to do that between now and the middle of March, and there. So if you can't make those timeframes, then we'll do the best we can.
Okay. And anything else that we need from the superintendent? Okay, like, sounds like we're all on the same page. Ready? Good conversation. Thank you. So we have 19 minutes remaining. I'll come back to the policy, and I heard that the student input can help to inform policy. Anything that you've read or gleaned over the last several weeks that has created a policy thought in your mind, something that we have, don't have, needs to be amended? Or do we need more time to do some analysis? Director Keating?
I personally need more time. My fire hose, I'm just trying to drink as, as safely as possible for my well-being, so I just personally would need a little more time before I could comment or make input.
Okay, sure. Dr. Garcia?
Mr. President? It may be helpful for the staff, the staff have spent some time generating these as recommendations. And so we haven't done deep work on these recommendations, because if this is not the recommendations that the board would like us to pursue, we need to hear from you, if not tonight, soon, to say, are these the steps, such as, oh, we want to hear from students? Yes. And so it would be helpful, if not tonight, and as soon, that we have clarity from you folks to say, is there enough from what you've heard from these study sessions, these goal settings, to say, this is not the end of the conversation around mental health, but these are enough to begin to build action plans and action steps towards, including policy analysis, including the revision of tax. These were initial ideas that were presented to you. So we just ask that you consider giving us some guidance, but we have not put work into these unless you say that this is the right first steps.
Okay, so on slide five, could we go back one to the Whole Child? Do I have the clicker? Is this me? Thoughts on the items that are listed? General consensus, this is the recommendation that's come from staff. Vice President Cobb?
I think we've had a lot of conversation about the tax pieces, so I think we've given some, provided some more context around some of those recommendations, so I hope that's enough there. I don't see anything here that I think is not going in the right direction. I do want to loop back to, for some of these, like the awareness campaign ideas, and maybe even the coping skills integration, seeing positive strategies, I did really like that in the slides that we had at the last discussion about this, one of them had what I kept calling to like a framework, and I looked across, and I like, we're, we can, I can point to a lot of things we're doing on this one, point to a lot of things we're doing on this one. So I think just, in thinking through what you prioritize, my thought, my thought is that just keeping an eye towards the areas where we might be doing a little bit less than the others, and thinking about how to round out our collective efforts in that way. I'm not being that clear, but I think that there was a lot of areas of support for mental health in particular, that I feel like we're doing a lot toward, and some that look like there was probably less so. So just, I'm sure that you will consider the balance of effort, but just keeping the balance in mind.
Thank you. Director Bobbrey?
I'm, I would agree, I think we've, we've talked a lot about the, some of the bigger policies. I think the internal ones, and the, and the ones working with partners, Whole Child, I think this district is doing an impressive amount of work with Whole Child, and, and I would want to make sure, dressing with Director Keating had said earlier, that we focus a substantial amount of energy on that at the earliest ages in our systems, so that we, you know, start beginning early and young, and, and really nurturing the children in, in ways that are positive. And I, I just want to say, I was at Gen Uid this, last, this week, and I, I saw something that was super cool, that I think fits into the model of what we're talking about, which is they do college familiars, where they, it's kind of like what they do at SOTA with MPG's, but it's, it's UBA, and I, probably at Sammy too, but my daughter went to SOTA, so that's where I know it from, so. But, you know, they look from, from the time you come in as a kindergartner to the time you're in fifth grade, you had, you're in one college, and it's, it's a really exciting thing, they have them up on, on the wall, and each one has an, it has a college in Washington State that's got their banner and their name, and so they go, these kids are assigned to a college with a, a specific teacher for the whole time they're, they're at Reed, and it's pretty exciting, because they have mentorship within it for the older kids and the younger kids, but also it's a family in, in, inside the, inside the school. And I think these are the kinds of Whole Child approaches that are, that I, I just hope that we can do some sharing, and I'm sure the principals share these kinds of things. But that was just one thing I witnessed that I thought was super valuable in a, in a school that, that has a lot of, you know, trauma in it. And so it seems to be really helpful, and those are the kinds of things that, that I think internally, you know, that we could try and replicate where, where appropriate, those kinds of, of positive, family kinds of supports for the kids mentally.
Thank you. Director Keating?
I just recalled, so at the Equity Symposium with NSBA, they, there was siblings, but one of the siblings, after his sister had attempted suicide, created an app, and he designed it, and I think he was in middle school when he designed it, but it's a free app, and it's called I'm Not, Not Okay. So it was an app that I actually sent to my own daughter and said, hey, would you check this out? And then just like vetted, and it was really interesting, but when we're looking at, and I'm also trying not to like take us off the rails here, but, and we're looking at like awareness campaigns, looking at things like that, to help bring in, just to let students know, here's what's available to you, and, you know, and assure, making sure that they're being vetted appropriately liability for us. But it was a really fascinating idea and concept around if you need someone, and they have partnerships, I believe with the Trevor Project, and the National Suicide Hotline, if I remember correctly. But it was this way where they could immediately text somebody, and they could get immediate someone to respond back right away. They also, one of the requirements was that I was a safe person, I was a designated safe person within their, their data, and so then I put my information in there. So it was a, I haven't, I, you know, I haven't fully investigated, but it would be something, as we think about ways to capitalize on what is available to us, and what is also not, what's available without adding an additional burden to families or students. That was just like an app that I hadn't been aware of before, and the concept I thought was really brilliant, and something that could be really beneficial. And so I don't know if that puts us, you know, like, takes us off the rails here, or is still in alignment with what we're talking about, but in terms of, I think awareness campaigns are really beneficial, and just reminding like what's available, what's out there, what can you do, you know, the see, see something, say something, right? The, and so I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb?
Oh, I can wait for Director Leon.
Director Leon?
So I think awareness campaigns, yeah, are, are beneficial, I think taking it to the next step of bringing it, so, an action step, similar to, so something that is automatic for most of the students to be incorporated into. For example, we're having conversations around school-based health centers, and it's discussed here in policymakers' ideas of expanding that, that access to our kids at the high school, middle school, even elementary school level, where they could access those, those health centers. Not that we, we run or build them all, but we get our partners to help us with this. So we've, we're in Oakland, but expanding our, our footprint, getting those kids in to visit with us, so automatically having like a visit, we're going to say, we're going to see everybody in the school once every 10 weeks, once every semester, and then we have, we do that check-in, we say, how you doing? Physical things, great, mental things, we, we touch on that, suicide prevention's part of that, and by the way, are there guns in your home, and are they safely stored? So these are things around controversial things, which could be thought of as controversial, but really there's safety issues around suicide, because that's one of the most common ways to kill yourself is with, with an unsecured weapon. So those are the pieces where I think we have the power to institute broad, broad-brush strokes that can really make a difference. And then if someone wants to opt out, a family wants to opt out and say, no, I don't want that my, my child to see the, the provider, the practitioner, the doctor in the clinic, then they have the right to do that, and that's fine. But we'll, we'll be able to reach a lot more kids, I think, if we do expand upon that. You know, the other thing is, ready to, we've talked a lot about the benefits of, and the debate we've had around delayed school start time. I think I'm ready to start to hear a little bit more discussion around that from ourselves, and hopefully have some, have a vote, maybe at our next meeting, to give direction to the superintendent's staff to do a formal study on that topic. the superintendent's staff to do a formal study on that topic around its safety benefits, so they can get their, their staff planning, evaluating things formally, but they need our, our vision and guidance on that. So giving guidance, it's been mentioned several times here tonight. So those are a couple of places where I think we can really make some next steps and some concrete effort in the next, you know, few months.
I have a clarifying question. If we took a vote on February 13th, what would it be on?
So I think the vote would be to give direction to say, start to formalize a committee of staff members that superintendent would, would form to evaluate the advantages of what a delayed start time would, would have on patient, on, on students' mental health and choices, and how could that be done? And then in that, we also want to talk to parents and, and students, of course, and staff around, is this something that they think would be valuable?
And what are the outcomes that we would be trying to achieve?
So depression, decrease, decrease depression, anxiety, decrease in that, decrease in fatigue, increase attendance in school, first period, second period.
So is it, is, I just, to clarify, so is the, we would ask the superintendent to come back to us with solutions to address those outcomes that you just identified, or, or how delayed bell schedule could move those outcomes?
Correct, right. So how delayed start time could move those outcomes?
Superintendent Centurion.
So we, we just had a recent conversation about beginning this conversation by me going to the health, the Pierce County Health Department. So are we negating that? Because I thought our first step was to go to the Health Department, find out what baseline data they had about sleeping. We've made an appointment, you know, for that, and that would be the first step. We'd figure out what, you know, we'd see what that was, and then we'd come back and give the board that information before we started, you know, doing, doing, doing a study. This, I'll just, I'll just be honest, taking information and, and getting these student conversations together, it's going to take a lot of staff time, and we're working on lots of other things. So, you know, we will, I will follow your direction, I've given you that input all along, but I just want you to know, there is a limit to the kind of things that we can pull off.
So yeah, it is important that we know that there's limited staff, limited time for the staff, and, and not overburdening the staff.
And, you know, and we have started, I mean, you know, there, different staff members have, you know, looked at some of the Seattle things, you know, we have looked, you know, to investigate further. I haven't actually contacted James Neal, but I wanted to look at, you know, some ideas about staff schedules and things. And so it's not that we're just sitting back doing nothing, you know, we, we aren't, but I felt comfortable when you said that the next step was to go to the Health Department and, and to look at that. So when you take a vote, then that's a totally different thing. That has to mean, means I have to initiate a lot of different actions.
Vice President Cobb.
I have two quick comments, one I'll offer on this topic, but another, one that goes backwards in a different direction. I did, I keep bringing it up because I thought it was useful, like the, that set of ways, pathways, I think, to get to mental health, I think was helpful. And one of those pathways did include getting enough sleep, but that seems like the question. How are, are kids getting enough sleep? And if they're not, what are the pathways to that? So on this topic around bell schedules, I don't know that it will be the right solution. I don't know if students even know, like, we tell them, you gotta go to bed, but why? I don't know even if they know why it's so important at this stage in their development around sleep. So I think that it's a conversation that we should absolutely have within the context of a comprehensive approach to supporting students' mental health and wellness, but the specific strategy, I'm just still not sure on. But the other point I just wanted to raise is that I think oftentimes when it comes to educational improvement approaches, I worked at the state, and so I know that there are lots of really smart, committed people working there, but we don't always feel that here because we interact with them around things like accountability and reporting. But on the topic of mental health and suicide prevention in particular, there have been through the last 10, 15 years legislators who have been really working hard and having to do a lot of advocacy year after year after year to get incremental bills passed on the topic. And each of those incremental bills has added just a little bit more money to the office of people who are focused on this. So I actually do think that making sure that we're taking full advantage of all the resources and tools and things that have been accumulated and made available on that website and touching base with the staff there, they'd probably be excited to have a district who is really diving into what's there because it's not an area where it gets a lot of like mandated attention, but they have done, in partnership with the Health Department and other agencies, a lot of work on this topic. So just, I'm sure you all are already doing this, but I just want to raise up that, oh, when you started talking about the app, I was thinking, oh, we have that crisis line now at the state level and all these things. So just making sure that we're like the district that's capitalizing on everything that they have to offer since we are so serious about this, I think would probably put us in a good place.
Dr. Garcia.
I would just, I'll go back to the recommendations. So we heard some other ideas. I think we're all very much in a place of, give us guidance, if these are not your priorities, fantastic. And if there is a new one that you'd like to add, your recommendation of what could potentially go off this list too. So, you know, I see some of these connected awareness campaign and what use of technology. There's numerous things that candidly we've been exploring and we have in the works and this, but these were brought to you as per your request. What are the recommendations based off the presentation that you wanted to hear from the superintendent's office? So it would be helpful in context as your popcorn ideas, are you suggesting that they go above these? And which ones would you like to see fall off the list?
Anybody have any objection to what's currently on the list for what we can do next for Whole Child? Good?
Yep.
I see you had nods.
I think.
Director Keating.
What I would, in my head, as a verbal and also as a verbal processor, I feel like some of the specific, like the popcorn ideas, to me seemed all intertwined in what's already laid out here. So in my interpretation, it wasn't to remove anything. I was thinking of things and listening from the lens of this framework of what's being presented. So just for clarification in terms of what I was, how I was perceiving and thinking of that, so I, I personally don't see anything that I would want to see off of the list. And I feel like the conversation, and again, this is also my first committee of the whole, so just, I feel like it was a useful conversation so that we can discuss like what avenues are out there and how do we get to, to that.
And I would imagine that we would bring you back work plans and business plans because these take resource allocation, and they're those similar to like our progress monitoring reports. So here's what we've done, here's what's still coming next, here's the kinds of resources that we take.
And Director Keating, this is, I think, our maybe fourth, so we're not that far ahead of you. We're still working through this to figure it out. And the idea has been to have a formal way to have informal conversations that have then been informing study sessions. And so I believe what the superintendent is looking for is, we have the study session and out of it came these proposed ideas for us to wrestle with tonight, and we've had good conversation around it. And if there is consensus that this is the move forward, then at the next scheduled study session on this topic, then they would bring forward the work plan to give us a sense of what it would take, and then we could start to move towards more formalization.
It seemed like Dr. Garcia was asking for even more specific, and maybe I misread that.
I think there were different ideas, and then there were some things that were, for example, bell schedule is not on this list. So if that's a conversation that you would like to pursue, then we would need guidance of saying, fantastic, is there something off this list that you feel comfortable could go away? Because that, and there, so we spend a lot of time as a staff saying, we know we need to stretch and we need to go deeper in this work. We know that there's resources that are going to take to do this work. An awareness campaign is, is deep work if it's happening, and it's not something that just happens once, it's how do you put that infrastructure in?
Right.
Those tools and those marketing. And so if that's the case, we would, I would argue that we would need a little bit of time to not only, each one of these has work plans, each one of these has resource allocations, you know, what is the partner relationships and what does that mean? And we've been successful in models like the Urban Collaborative where we spent time and we revisited and said, this is what we said we did, and here's where we are, and here's what we've learned. And through our progress monitoring of benchmarks, continuous improvement. So I, the staff is looking for that kind of clarity from you, is there enough here to start this work and dive deep into these elements, knowing that they are going to take some time, knowing they are going to take budget? But if you're not comfortable with these being the right first steps, then we need to know that so we don't spend time and investment in that strategy.
I, I'm comfortable with the list. I think it's reflective of things that we have been talking about. I think the policymaker section, that refers to us as school board members, the issues where we're taking the initiative and then working with partners, the superintendent starting to design and build, and we have some framework in place, we've been doing this, but we're talking about in a, in a very comprehensive way, designing and implementing the after-school, community-based infrastructure, and the stay positive, getting physical. I see that's all a part of those extended learning opportunities, the partnership between the district and metro parks, especially around elementary programming, where we have thousands of kids now staying on campus and being able to participate in sport activities that we know help with mental and physical health, the coping skills and the positive strategies and a broader awareness campaign. I know that we have thoughts of how do we really do it in a robust way? So I'm comfortable with what's been outlined. Are there additional thoughts? Director Leon.
Yeah, I think we've made good, great strides in things you just mentioned, so especially the after-school engagement with sports and activities and expanding the sports teams to include more kids. I think it's something that we, we're thinking about continuing on. I think the collaboration with the Health Department that you mentioned, I think it's a good first step and, and waiting for that, you know, if it's a month to have some information come out of that before we have more discussion around the small, you know, the subtopic of the delayed start time because of the reasons why it's been shown to improve mental health, but waiting to hear what, what they have to tell us about our kids and diving deeper into what the deficit in sleep might be. That's, I think that's a good idea to wait on that. So if we wait a month for, for that topic while we give the rest of the, your staff guidance that the rest of the, the plan is, is something that we feel strongly about, we're in line with.
On the, on the topic of bell schedule, I know that I've had previous conversations with Director Leon, and Director Leon and I had conversations with the superintendent and also Vice President Cobb, we've had conversations around establishing a baseline, trying to get our arms around where we are. How do y'all feel about directing the superintendent to work with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department on an assessment to baseline what are the sleep habits of our students so we understand, are we in a massive deficit? Are we doing okay? Are we somewhere in between? Thoughts? Vice President Cobb.
I still think that that probably requires like plant, like planning and lots of work. That sounds like, and I, it might be the right work. The, the last comment I was going to have is kind of connected to that, but I think it's a great thing that you all have a meeting coming up and maybe some, like with that, maybe in the back of your mind, maybe some indication that that's a study that they can do or might come out of it.
That's right.
So I think that's a great thing.
It's explored.
And with everything that's on both this list and the next slide, I, I would really appreciate you all keeping an eye toward, what are these kind of not truly one-time things that we can do as opposed to things that are going to require ongoing strategic investment with an eye toward our strategic planning? Because in general, I feel like some of this conversation is, we can go down these rabbit holes in part because we don't have the guardrails of like the strategic plan, benchmark, review kind of way of looking at data and looking at progress that we have in like the board meeting context, but this is a new area, expanding beyond safety to student health, student education. So I think it would be great to, like as we think about next steps and some of these recommendations, like how, what are the implications for the strategic plan in this area too, so that we can not, not waste your effort. Not that any of these are going to be a waste, but how can some of these help? How can pursuing some of these recommendations help inform our strategic plan progress that we need to make too? And where are the, where are you going to get the biggest bang for your time in terms of the level of effort? I think that's something to, as in thinking about prioritaries and timing resources, maybe something to keep in mind.
And while the five of us are here, and I think this is the first time the five of us have been together to talk about bell schedule, and so, so that there's consistency and continuity and understanding of where we're going, are there additional thoughts into, I guess I would be interested to know where each of you are on the topic, at what level are you on the topic? And so that, I think the superintendent is getting conflicting input, and so how, you know, as one of those odd elected bodies that only operates in consensus, hopefully unanimous as much as possible, but certainly consensus, three out of five, how do we provide more specific guidance to her so she understands our collective expectation? Director Keating.
I think that I'm really, I would be very interested in what the Health Department has to say, and I think that there's just a lot, if this is the, if this is the best move and the right move, then I think that if it's supportive of our students and achievements, then I would be, you know, I'm very, I'm supportive in exploring it to understand, is this what we should be investing in? And then also understanding what is, what goes into an implementation because it's really complicated. What's the impact on staff? What's the impact on bargaining agreements? What's the impact on athletics? What's the impact? Like I would, I think that we would also need to have also significant buy-in from the community to make sure, and students to make sure, is this something that's actually going to benefit? And because it would have a, a deep impact. And so I, my position is that I, I am very curious about it, and I feel like I need, I would be very, I'm, I'm very interested to hear what the Health Department has to say, and also just to make sure that we, that, that it's done really strategically. And then what, what is the cost? So that we're not doing something that, to making sure that we're looking at what, what are the full implications and what are the benefits, the outcomes? So I'm in support of exploring the, you know, exploring this and specifically through the Pierce County Health Department to see, you know, what are the benefits and where are we at? What, again, establishing, where are we, and then what do we do with that information?
Thank you. Director Bonbray.
Well, that was very well said. I think it, I really agree, you know, instinctively and intuitively, I love the idea of having the older students, you know, get the sleep they need sleep in. I think that it's so complex because then if, does that mean elementary school students have to go earlier, you know, as a result, or is, you know, can they stay at nine? Now if that doesn't work, then there's lots of ramifications, so it's not, and I don't think you can change one bell schedule without the others, so I don't know what that means. And so I'm back to the data. I just need to understand what are the, what are the implications, what are the impacts, and both financially but also staff, and I was thinking the same thing around the teachers and the, and then, you know, it has a lot to do with the, we just finished bargaining, and so how, how does that, how is that impacted? And just to hear from families too, because you've got working families, and what does that mean for them and whether or not? So I think there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. It starts with the Health Department, but I think it's way more complex than that. And I know other districts have looked into this and they've decided one way or the other. And we're a different district who has different communities, and we actually have different communities within our district. So they may, different communities may support it or not based on their own lifestyles and needs. And so I think, I haven't seen a, and, and thank you, by the way, Director Leon for sending the background on, on the health benefits, and I think that's, in my mind, indisputable. I mean, I think kid, people do, do better with more sleep and I- I mean, I think kid, people do, do better with more sleep and I think this, the teenagers are struggling with the whole getting that to be the right time. But I think there's so many other factors involved that I just am ignorant about. I don't know the details on how that would impact and it's a puzzle. So as we get, start with the Health Department and then also maybe if we decide that that's a direction we want to take, we probably should think about what are the other puzzle pieces that we need to figure out and make sure we're working at all of those so we can get information from the teachers, from the communities and, and the students as well. So I, I don't think it's something we can vote on immediately, but I definitely support the concept and I think it's a positive thing for kids in the ultimate lane.
All right, thank you. Director Leon, did you have anything to add?
Nothing beyond, I think what everyone's already stated with regard to, yeah, there's complex pieces to, you know, instituting this, if this is something we decide to do. But it's been done, there's, there's protocols and roadmaps to doing this. Our staff could do it. I think that they've got the capability to do it. But I think that there's also limitations on time and I think we'd have to think about what comes off the list at some point if we do decide to do this. Or another topic comes up higher that we decide to work on, what other thing comes lower on the list or at all, maybe not off the list, but gets less emphasis. So obviously in very much favor of, of implementing this, but I know that this is a complex decision that we all need to get more data on from our Health Department. I think there is a lot of good data out there already from many, many health institutions and educational institutions around the country and the world that have analyzed this for many, many years. So let's, let's do a little more digging and maybe we can make some directional changes in the near future, few months or so.
Vice President Cobb?
I'm interested in continuing to explore our assumptions about this issue, like what, working with the Health Department on that, like what are, what kind of, what are student sleep patterns currently? Can they support something like that? How are students spending their time the rest of the day? And we talk about implications, like not just working families and some working students and who are student athletes and going to practice before school and that one extra hour and going to practice after and having games. They already get home at a certain hour. So how does it impact the whole day? And what are the root causes of the struggles that students are experiencing now? If, if it turns out that starting too early and not getting enough sleep is linked to a lot of the mental health challenges that we see in students who are struggling, like if we see it emerge as the solution, and I feel like that's the right way to go. It's hard in isolation as the one district rather than a whole state doing it, but with our local control, we're not all, like that's probably not politically feasible at the state level. It would be easier at the state level. But still, that's a consideration too. Do we want to go after this on our own and try to make the change on our own? Or do we want to see what the will is among our colleagues and the other large urban districts in particular, who have different transportation, other challenges and more rural, more rural and smaller districts with limited transportation fleet? So there's different avenues if that emerges as the solution even, and there are different possible strategies to get at addressing students' needs for adequate sleep. But how, I just, I'm still interested in understanding more of the current context. So I'm excited to hear what comes from the conversations with the Health Department on this topic.
Thank you. And I would agree. I, I think the baseline data to help us better understand where our students are and, and if they need more sleep, perhaps it's a sleep hygiene campaign, something that's, gets to the end of people having, students having more sleep, but not as disruptive as changing bell schedules. Months ago when this conversation began, you know, we talked about educational outcomes and health outcomes. And as I've read a number of studies, they are either mixed, inconclusive, or even the study that, that Seattle used when you, I think it was 42 pages and I read 42 pages, the scientists themselves say that there is no way that they could ever link causation to academic success. I talked with Izakua who implemented late bell schedule and they said, there is no link to academic success. And so if we're going to take this up, I think we have to be realistic about what sort of direct academic impact it would have. And on the health side, then I think we need to talk with the Health Department and other medical practitioners to understand what are the options? Because to me, the bell schedule would be, would cause the greatest disruption in the district. So we need to figure out, I, I would, at, at the appropriate time, then would want to direct the superintendent to bring back options to get those sorts of outcomes to help students achieve more sleep. I just worry that, you know, it's, I, I don't know that we have consensus from students and we're, what I appreciate about this board is in, in my ninth year, this board has been more interested in student voice than at any time previously, which I think is great. And I think we have students now that are engaged. I can't remember the last time a student came to a study session, right? So the students are telling us they want to be engaged. And I think for us on a topic like this to engage them in a meaningful way. I think that we have heard from a limited number of people. I think that there was a coordinated campaign to come and tell us the importance of it. I don't know that it's representative of the entire city. I think when people are encouraged to come and tell us it's important is one thing. I think when it bubbles up organically and people, students particularly, tell us that bell schedule is going to make a difference, that's an entirely different thing. And so I'm hopeful when we go out and we hear from students and we talk about what would help you, that we hear authentically from them around bell schedule and we take that into consideration. I don't see any good that comes from fast-tracking this. This is such, in talking to colleagues in other districts, district of our size, transportation, buses, bus CBAs, teacher CBAs. We just told the superintendent to move forward on design and implement an after-school community-based infrastructure. That's, there's, it's not just us, it's YMCA and Boys and Girls Clubs and Parks Department. So I just want us to be really thoughtful in how we get to the decision and that we calibrate expectation for the community. Because I think there's been mixed messaging out to the community where the board is on this issue. And it's not fair to the board and it's not fair to the community. And it's definitely not fair to the superintendent to feel conflicted about which way do we need to lead this, you know, important topic? And at a time where we've cut $50 million, there's less people at CAB, there's less people in the district and we're telling her, do more with less. I think we owe it to the community to make certain that we have absolute consensus on these sorts of issues. So I, I very much appreciate, I hear five of us saying, let's get the data and be data-driven. I don't think I've heard anybody say, no. I think we need more information. I think we need more student input, we need more community input. And then I think I'm confident that we'll arrive at the best decision for our students and family. Superintendent Centurion?
It'll be interesting. I mean, I'm looking forward to going and talk to the Health Department to see if they've thought about it at all, you know? And if they have any data and if they have collected things, I really have a lot of respect for Dr. Chen. And so it'll be, I, you know, we're looking forward to kind of sitting down with them and having the discussion. So I think that'll be great to bring back.
Yeah. So thank you. Let us know when you get the meeting set and perhaps we could have that as a superintendent's report at an upcoming board meeting. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Thanks for hanging in there. We ran a little bit late, but I think it was important discussion. Jasmine, thank you for joining us this evening. We'll be back here next Thursday, February 13th for a business meeting. Meeting is adjourned.